... April 18th, 2018 at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers. We'll call the meeting to order and have the roll call. Ms. Kirby?
Councilman DeGarris.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Cornman.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Black.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Here.
And Mayor McVeigh.
Here.
We do have a call.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, we'll move on to our action required items. AA, Bill Number 8072, "The City Council Will Take Action On Ordinance Establishing An Orly System For Certain City Employees Not Covered Under RSMO Section 105.500 To Select An Exclusive Bargaining Representative And For Such Employees Exclusive Bargaining..." Just a minute here, I'm going to go to my page. "...Representative To Engage In Collective Bargaining In A Fashion Consistent With Missouri Constitution And State Law."
Move for first reading of Bill Number 8072, but caption?
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance establishing a collective bargaining system for certain employees of the city of Poplar Bluff.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
Motion in second for second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance establishing a collective bargaining system for certain employees of the city of Poplar Bluff.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
A motion in second for adoption. Is there any discussion? We need your name and address for the record, please.
Mark Baker, 2064 Green Ridge Lane, Jackson, Missouri. Good evening, Mayor. I didn't have the draft of the ordinance when I was here Monday night. I've just got a few questions, clarifications, and the one that I've got is the draft. I don't know if there were any changes to what was put out tonight, so I'm going off of it, and I'm going to refer to probably the page numbers in here, but, and I guess, it's going to be difficult, under C, timeliness of petition and bars to election, under contract bar, it talks about when there is a collective bargaining agreement of more than one year in duration covering all or some of the employees in the bargaining unit, representation and decertification petitions may be filed during any time after the first year the agreement has elapsed. And I guess I'm saying, when you say elapsed, that's when a contract reaches its expiration, and then it's, okay, I understand that now, sorry about that. Let me move on to the next, in the next section, D, contents of petition for certification, I go down after all of the enumerated items, after number eight, it says, "The petition must be accompanied by a showing of interest of not less than 45% of the employees in the unit alleged to be appropriate." And I'm just curious, I know your ordinance stated to be inconsistent with state law and whatever else it was, the State Board of Mediation guideline is 30%, so I was just curious why it was raised to 45% in this ordinance.
We'll let Mr. Richardson address that.
Is that a question directed to me?
She said you would respond.
Oh, okay. There's no particular reason, this is, again, this is a template ordinance that has been adopted by other cities, and that was put in, it's less than 50%, which is obviously a lower standard, Mr. Baker. And that's what we have following the template ordinance that other cities have adopted. We've plugged in that number.
So you say other, do you have the other cities' names that have adopted this 45% threshold?
I do not.
Okay.
We can certainly get that for you.
I appreciate it.
You can get that for yourself if you want, but...
Okay, then I notice...
It's still a plurality and not a majority, which is a much lower standard.
I completely understand.
Yeah.
At the end of that paragraph, it talks about, on mine, it goes to the next page, "Such showing of interest shall be dated not more than two months prior to the filing of the election," and the, or filing of the petition, I'm sorry, and then the State Board of Mediation inconsistent with the National Labor Relations Act, that's a six-month period. And it really seems to be throttling down the period to which they could exercise their right to organize, and I'm just curious why that six month would be brought down to two months?
We think that six, we think that 60 days, two months, is plenty of time. People will change their minds, they might sign something, and then, you know, a week later, a month later, they may have buyer's regret and decide not to sign it. This gives two full months, and we believe that that makes it timely. And what it says is, if someone has signed, you know, a card wanting to participate in the process, they've got two months that they can change their mind, and that seems to be a reasonable time to us. As you know, in, you know, in the process of, you know, wanting to organize a union, not wanting to organize a union, two months is a long time. So it protects that decision that the individual employee might make for a period of two months. After that, they can always renew, they can always resign, Mr. Baker.
Sure.
As you know.
Sure, I'm just curious as to why the reduction in six months here, but then on the following page, you allow for a decertification, that threshold of standard to not be 30%, but 20%. You've actually lowered the threshold there, and you're saying their showing of interest is good for six months. So what you're effectively saying is, if you want to organize, we're going to set the threshold and the standard higher, but if you want to decertify, we'll drop that four way down. That's what the ordinance appears to do.
Yeah, we see that as an effort to protect our employees. If we certify, and if your employees, your members of the bargaining unit are not happy with you, then they should at least be able to rethink their actions.
Okay.
Again, that is something that we perceive as being an item that protects our employees. They may be your members, but they're also our employees.
They're going to get their protection when they go to vote. I mean, whether it's two months or six months, their card is good for, when they go to vote is when they're going to get their say.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
On I, determination of showing of interest, it goes down in here, "If the city manager or his designee determines the evidence does not demonstrate appropriate level showing of interest, the petitioner shall have 24 hours to provide the necessary showing of interest." And I'm just, I'm not familiar with that type of language from anywhere, I'm just curious maybe where you got that from, and how do you see that being affected and implemented?
In reality, I don't see it as affecting us or any other similar processes in Missouri. This comes straight out of the federal law, and it's put in there as a provision in the event that it might become applicable. I don't know of any circumstances where it has ever been applied in Missouri to any other cities.
Okay. So you do recognize there's some parts in here that are in compliance with federal law or mirrored after federal law?
No, I wouldn't say that at all. I think this...
Oh, that's where you said you got this from.
This provision comes from provisions that are either court-made or statutory out of federal law, so it is absolutely in compliance with it. So I'm saying just the opposite is what you're contending. There's not anything in this ordinance that contravenes federal or state law.
Okay.
It's all compatible.
But there's, I mean, there's obviously some recognition for state and federal law in certain various aspects.
Well, and that's what this whole ordinance does, as you, if you read the first provisions of it, it says, you know, "We're essentially adopting an ordinance that is in compliance with 2007 Missouri Supreme Court case, but also through that process, it recognizes and adheres to both federal and state laws for non-police type of unions." Keep in mind, we've had almost a century of federal and state law that has fine-tuned, has refined the processes. The only problem, until 2007, police officers were specifically excluded by law, and the Supreme Court case in Missouri in 2007 said, "No, we're going to include police officers." But ironically, the court didn't have the authority, and the legislature did not have the foresight to say, "We're going to bring the police officers under the State Board of Mediation." So that's when, as you aptly pointed out, Mr. Baker, that's when the Supreme Court said, "Yeah, we're going to let police officers organize, but we're not going to give you any rules."
And these are going to just let it back to the state.
And as you requested, you said, "Let's adopt an ordinance,"
Sure.
"which is what the Supreme Court intended for us to do."
Correct.
And that's what we're doing here tonight.
Continuing on under section I, it talks about, determines reasonable cause to believe the unresolved issues concerning questioning representation, set the matter for a hearing before a hearing officer designated by the city attorney. I'm just curious, what type of a person would that be? Would it be, would it be an attorney, or a judge, or somebody like that?
Well, it certainly would be done in consultation with the union rep, which would be you, but we anticipate there that it would be somebody completely outside the city limits of Poplar Bluff, certainly not the city attorney, certainly not a member of the administration. We don't necessarily want to go to Cape Girardeau. We're looking for, and we will be looking if it comes to that, for an attorney type, and probably the natural qualification would be someone who is trained and specializes in mediation. So we don't necessarily want to go to St. Louis because they charge a ton of money per hour, but Cape Girardeau, Sykesville, somewhere outside the realm of influence within the city of Poplar Bluff. And that's good for the city, and it's good for its employees to have a very fair, knowledgeable, experienced man or woman who will serve as truly an independent hearing officer.
I completely agree a thousand percent.
Yeah.
I'm glad to hear you say that. I'll just throw out a suggestion. I've used the Federal Mediation Conciliation Service before. The first thing they do is they come in, they say, "Hi, I'm from the government, and I'm here to help." That always gets a big laugh, but, I mean, there are people that are experienced in, you know, labor terms and stuff like that, and they're free of charge, so that could be very appealing. Hopefully, we'll never need one, that would be my...
But I can tell you that it would not be beneficial to the city or to our employees to pick someone locally that might be even subconsciously influenced, so we'll go outside. Normally, you don't have to go outside to find the next one, but in this case, we'll go outside.
Understand.
Mark, is that who helped when you did the last negotiation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, she was a federal mediator.
Yeah, I remember.
And...
That would be the type of person we'd be looking for.
Okay, very, and I think, to your credit and your point, it's somebody neutral, outside of here, doesn't have relationships because they can be prejudiced one way or the other, and I would like if they were prejudiced towards us, but I completely understand, and that's a fair point.
Well, and it doesn't help us, and it doesn't help our employees if you have someone that who truly is biased one way or the other.
Completely agree.
It's going to ultimately end up in a circuit court.
Yep.
A black robe judge, as we call it.
Yep.
And that doesn't help anybody.
No, no.
Yeah.
Moving on to section L, the election, talks about the notices be posted no less than three days prior to the election. I just, State Board does six days, I hope you would, you know, consider adhering to that. Second paragraph, this list must be supplied to every organization or employee within not less than three days. I hope six days would be considered there. I had a question, the next paragraph, two sentences, said, "Each of the interested parties may designate an observer for the poll unless otherwise stipulated by the party's observers must be non-supervisory employees of the public employer." And I guess, my question is, you know, typically where I come from, we've always been able to designate our own observer, and so I'm not real sure how that language reads and how it's intended to apply. You know, it couldn't be somebody that was voting, you know, that's obviously not something that could happen, so trying to figure out, it'd be another, somebody employed by the city, but not in a...
What this contemplates is that we don't want somebody observing your, our employees as they vote, if it's someone that is in a supervisory capacity over them. It creates an environment of possible intimidation and so forth. So what we're looking for there are observers that don't have the ability to be retributive against those folks that vote.
And I think I'm following you, but it says observers must be non-supervisory employees of the public employer.
Correct.
So you're saying they've got to be employees of the city, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
You could designate anybody outside the ultimate bargaining unit.
Okay.
But they just can't, and this is a protection for our employees, actually, Mr. Baker, is we don't want a captain sitting there watching his beat cops, if you will.
Understood.
Cast their votes.
Understood.
And so this is really a protection for the members of the bargaining unit that are voting.
So in my experience, we've always designated or appointed who our observer would be, but you all have the right to have one as well.
Yeah, if it comes down to that, we won't have a problem with that.
Okay.
We're going to have someone there, and you're going to have someone there, and these are, just like this, the county clerk hires election judges, you know...
Yes.
... to conduct elections.
Yes.
These can be some people that don't have any axe to grind, don't have any authority or control over the people casting the ballots.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm moving on, and I don't know what, I guess I'm in M, but maybe it goes to section six, I've lost, anyway. Talks about a lot of the financial disclosure reporting that the union would have to do back to the city.
What's section in M?
I'm on page 16 of mine, but I think I'm in M.
But what does the top of the page start with?
Section five, paragraph M, I believe is where you're...
I'm in section six.
Okay, then section six.
15, six, 14?
Page 16.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And I'm on the draft, so I'm not real sure if we're in the same...
You're not on M of section five. Now you moved to section six.
You're actually just in section six, I think.
Yes, ma'am. Section six.
Yeah.
Maybe it's not under any certain...
Yeah, M is done, and then now you're in section six.
Okay.
The way, I just want to make sure we're on the same page with you.
You got it.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. So it talks about, we have to file a report, disclosure report, I guess the union would, list of officers, authorized representatives, with the amount of their salaries and benefits, detailed expenses, in providing representation to the employees in the bargaining unit in the city, the method for determining dues and/or fees or assessments for employees in the bargaining unit, and other financial information deemed appropriate by the city. I've never seen this before anywhere, and I'm just curious what the interest is or where this came from.
Well, it, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a public information item that, you know, even your members would want to see, the city would want to see, is there, do you have a concern about that?
Not a bit.
Okay.
Not a bit, but it's just, I don't know that your ordinance can require us to disclose information. This is above my pay grade, to be honest. So, and I don't know that, I just don't know the legalities around it, to be perfectly honest.
Well, if the tables were turned, you certainly would be able to get that information from the city, and this is all, this is just a matter of information that's required under this ordinance when requested that you provide that information. There shouldn't be anything offensive in that unless you have something to hide.
No.
And you don't, and I know you don't, Mr. Baker. I'm not suggesting that, but this is...
We may not always have you.
... an annual report that we require of you, just like you require of us.
Sure. Okay. I'm just not aware of it in any other ordinance in the state. I've never seen it before, so I'm just curious about it.
But you don't have any objection to it?
Well, I, I'm not, I'm going to reserve the right to have our attorney review that. She hasn't seen this yet, and I'm sure she may or may not want to weigh in on that. Okay. And down at the bottom of that page, in section seven, in the next paragraph, talks about the mandatory subject of bargaining or salaries and other conditions of ordinance, or of employment set out in this ordinance, and, Mr. Richardson, you're well aware, there's mandatory subject of bargaining, and there's permissive subjects of bargaining, and this wouldn't deviate from that. Okay.
No.
Okay.
I mean, the whole, the whole issue of management rights versus employee rights.
Understood.
Very clearly, and even, even if we were trying to pull a shenanigan on you on that, that would be in violation of that long, century-long established law. Management has certain rights, and employees have certain rights to bargain in good faith.
Absolutely.
This, this ordinance absolutely complies with those federal and state standards that have been established long since.
So that I can be clear when I walk out here tonight, because it's going to be some of the first questions I get asked, under this ordinance, for these classifications, can you tell me if, in your opinion, they would be eligible or not eligible to be in a bargaining unit? Police chief?
I think you're getting the cart before the horse. We haven't even met to discuss these, these issues, but the, the issue of what's an appropriate bargaining unit is something that's set out in the statute, and it's in compliance with state and federal precedents, so I'm not in a position tonight, you and I and Mr. Massingham have not even met to talk about, well, we met initially.
Right.
You know, and you wanted everybody but the chief and the deputy chief, and we said, "No, I don't think that works, but we'll sit down in good faith and we'll discuss that with you, and hopefully by agreement, we can come up with what we can agree as an appropriate bargaining unit."
Sure.
If we don't, then you've got the protection, and we've got the protection, of the independent hearing officer that would determine what that bargaining unit would be.
Okay, and that would be someone like we were talking about from the FMCS or somebody like that?
That's the whole purpose of having that process of an independent hearing officer in there.
Okay, so let me get to this question, because I don't want to have a misunderstanding right off the bat. Based off of what I read here, and then all the classifications that I've asked for job descriptions in the police department, the way I read this, the secretary, the chief communications officer, the dispatchers, the animal control officers, and the code enforcement officers would not be eligible under this ordinance because they would be covered by State Board of Mediation.
I believe that's probably right. That doesn't mean that we can't by agreement include those.
And that's, and that's kind of where our first discussion was headed, was to talk about that, but then also, your ordinance also says, nobody other than, you know, peace officers can be in a contract, but I think the parties are always free to do whatever they want to agree to.
Absol- absolutely.
So I think that's where our interest is, and, you know, I have my opinion.
Yeah, and I think we would run afoul with Missouri law if we forced in or forced out those non-commissioned officers by agreement. We can, we can include them if we believe it's appropriate, but otherwise, they come under the State Board of Mediation.
Understand, and I think that's what I'm looking for.
And as we all know, police officers are a special animal. This ordinance is going to control police officers and police officers only. State Board of Mediation's going to control anybody that's not a commissioned officer.
And so I, so we are basically in agreement, I don't want to put you on the spot or put words in your mouth, but the secretary, chief communications officer, dispatcher, the animal control, and code enforcement, their path is probably through the State Board of Mediation.
Unless we agree otherwise.
Okay. Do we agree otherwise?
No, sir. We don't...
That's the next step.
Okay, yeah, again, you're getting the cart before the horse.
Yeah.
We're not talking here tonight about who's in the bargaining unit or anything else. We're talking about adopting an ordinance that sets out the rules for the ballgame that we're getting ready to play.
I think that answers all my questions. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, and thank you for your knowledge and hard work on putting this together for us. Our employees are our best interests, their best interest, of course, is first and foremost, and so just to, let's lay this out, like you said, it's like we're beginning the ballgame. This is the groundwork where we can adopt the ordinance if we so choose tonight, so that they can voluntarily be recognized and then organized. We're not yet saying who's in there, you know, that's the next step, so we're just laying the groundwork for them to get this ordinance on the books so that they can begin. Is that right, Mr. Richardson?
That is correct.
Yeah.
The issue, the issue of the appropriate bargaining unit, and then the issue of voluntary versus vote are two issues that we can't even broach. Again, I hate to sound political, but that's the cart before the horse. We have to adopt the rules of the game before we start playing the game, and tonight, we're just adopting the rules of the game, which allows for the process for Mr. Baker, Mr. Massingham, and either side, whoever they want to bring in, to discuss the second issue, which has to be determined either by agreement or by independent hearing officer. Who is the bargaining unit? Who's in it? Not by person, but by position.
Absolutely.
Which is really important, because as has been pointed out, people come and go, but positions stay the same until they're changed by policy. So the bargaining unit is not determined by persons, it's determined by positions. And then the third leg of this milk stool is, do we voluntarily recognize, which is a discretionary decision of this council, or do we say, "Let's just have a good, free, confidential, private vote of the members that we've identified that are in that union, and then, and then they tell us, okay?" So those are issues that you'll have to deal with in the future. Tonight, we're just adopting the rules of the game, and as the, as the game goes on, then we've got a good umpire that can call balls and strikes and home runs and so forth and so on.
I don't want to walk out of here under a wrong understanding, but when I left Monday night, I was very much under the impression voluntary recognition wasn't going to be considered at any point in time, and now, now I'm hearing that may or may not be the case.
It can be. Once we adopt this ordinance, and we start moving forward, Mr. Baker, the current status of probably the opinion of administration, not this council, because this council has not discussed this, but the current opinion is that it's probably more fair to all of our employees that end up in the bargaining unit to let's let them have a simple vote. I can't imagine IBEW being afraid of a...
Oh, no.
... a secret ballot.
Absolutely not, no.
And so it doesn't necessarily delay it. The decision will be made by this council. Do we just go ahead and say, "Okay, well, we assume that all of our employees want this, and so we're going to recognize," or do we let them have their God-given right to a secret ballot to tell us whether they want it or not?
Okay, I just didn't, I didn't want to walk out of here tonight because I've kind of heard two different things over the last two meetings, and I don't want to say something incorrectly when I'm asked.
See, I think the current opinion, and this is, we were all, as you know, you and I had talked with Mr. Massingham, and we'd had that discussion, and there's been a big push, "Okay, we want to, we want to organize, just recognize us, and let's go forward from there. We have no rules, we have no, no process." And so, yeah, our first reaction has been, "No, I mean, it seems fair to our employees, let them vote. If they want it, let them vote." Not questioning you.
Understand.
You know, you say, "Well, I've got 37 cards." Well, you know, maybe you do, and, and I don't doubt that a bit.
Understand.
But first of all, we don't know if those cards are from people that are going to end up being in the bargaining unit or not.
And that's fair.
Yeah, and so nobody should be afraid of a secret ballot.
Okay.
And our position, starting out, until this council guides Mr. Massingham and myself or whoever he chooses to work with him, is a secret ballot's the best way to go. Until you can show us that a secret ballot is not the best way to go, that's probably administration's current position, but that's not etched in stone.
Okay.
These seven people here are going to tell us what, how to proceed.
Okay.
No, that's, it's definitely not etched in stone, but I will say, I mean, I've had a few people from the police department come to me and say, "I don't want a union. Do I have a choice here?" And, you know, that's part of my reason, thinking they should be able to vote whether they want one or not.
Sure, and I think once we determine the bargaining unit...
Right.
Right, good, bad, or indifferent, whether they want it or not, depending on their classification, they may or may not be covered. So that's...
True, yeah.
Doesn't mean they'll have to be in the union, but they'll be covered by the...
Your folks, our folks, these employees.
Yes.
Will make that determination.
Our people.
And we want to make sure, the folks that don't want it, if there are folks out there that don't want it, and we've heard that, we've heard from other folks.
Yeah.
The showing Monday night at the meeting, some folks want it.
Yeah.
Let them decide through a secret ballot. That's how we do everything in America.
Right, and the challenge that I've got on... And the challenge that I've got on my side, just to be open with everybody, is I've got signatures on cards from every classification. So that's going to be a dilemma, is if you've got, you know, half the people in one classification don't want to be in, how do you make something happy and so?
That's something that, that's something that...
I don't know how you stay married to it.
You and Mr. Massingham, we're going to have to, we're going to have to work through.
Okay.
And I can assure you, you're going to earn your salary, and Mark's going to earn his salary, and I'm going to earn my salary as we, as we start dealing with that, once, once the rules of the game are set in place.
And Mark, before you sit down, I just want to let you know this, too. We have talked, Danny Whitley and I, for several years, because I don't want you to think we're trying to pull something, and it may not happen, but we've talked about moving code enforcement officers to the planning department. They've been there before, they've gone back and forth a couple of times. That may or may not happen, but I don't want anybody to think that I'm doing that so they can't join a union.
Understand.
Because that's definitely not true.
Understand.
But I want you to realize that, so.
Fair enough.
We have a new planning manager.
And, you know, we were kind of waiting for a new planner to come in, and he's here now, and he's kind of getting a little more involved with code enforcement, so.
So the reality is, the three of us probably need to sit down in the very near future and talk about the bargaining unit?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Once this order is put in place, Mark, I think Mr. Massingham, ironically, the three Marks. Mark, Mark, Mark.
Sounds like a hairless dog running around.
We can move forward with those discussions, and we will, in good faith, move forward with those discussions.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
And we, as a council, are not ready to make a decision without this foundation, with these rules to protect our employees and all those involved. It's not a flat yes, it's not a flat no, but like you said, we were getting the cart before the horse, and so we had to go to this measure to get this on the books, should the council vote for it tonight, then that will be the foundation to get us started.
I understand. Mr. Richardson brought up a valid point. You know, when I came and met with you all, that's the first you heard of it, and I'd been on the job for a couple of months, talking to people about it, so, you know, I don't want to say you're a couple of months behind me, but I've been kind of out in front on this a little bit more, you know, involved, so that's fair. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion amongst the council? Roll call vote, Ms. Kirby.
Councilwoman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Black.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor McVeigh.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill number 8072 has been adopted. Item BB, Bill number 8073, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff to execute an aviation fuels contract and a refuel or lease agreement with Eastern Aviation Fuels, Inc., for the supplying of aviation fuel and fuel equipment to the Popper Bluff Airport.
Motion for first reading of Bill 8073.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to execute a contract and related documents for the supplying of fuel and refueling lease agreement with Eastern Aviation Fuels, Inc.
Move for second reading of Bill number 8073.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to execute a contract and related documents for the supplying of fuel and refueling lease agreement with Eastern Aviation Fuels, Inc.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion for adoption in second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGaris.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor McVeigh.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.